Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission. I would like first for Mr. Pruder to explain how the public can participate remotely in tonight's meeting.
Good evening Chair Doran, fellow planning commissioners and members of the public, thank you very much. I just want to go over a few things for tonight's meeting regarding procedures involving communicating. The planning commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of this meeting. For those who are presenting on an item for tonight's agenda, we asked that you also kindly turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone by, sorry, when you're finished with the presentation portion of your item, unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone so you may speak. Alternatively, for those of you calling on tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your phone or keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. For any members of the public who have a Zoom account or phone line that they are sharing this evening with another person who would also like to be presenting or providing a comment, please inform staff at the start of your comment so that staff will ensure that both people, both commenters will be able to provide their comment subsequently after you finish yours. And with that said, I hand it back to you Chair Doran, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the roll now as the commissioners to do an audible response so we can get it on transcript. Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening, President.
You, DeCarty.
Hello.
Harris.
Hi.
Kennedy.
Hello.
Riggs.
Present.
Tate.
Present.
And with myself, we're all present and accounted for. I would like to ask Ms. Sandoire if she has any reports and announcements for us.
Good evening Chair Doran and Commissioners, I have no reports or announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
You have any questions? Not seeing any. We'll move to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed on our consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Mr. Pruder, can you see if we have any hands raised for the public?
Thank you again Chair Doran. At this time, I do not see any hands raised or indication that a member of the public would like to speak. We can wait for a moment if you'd like.
Yes, let's do that. Still no hands raised?
I still see no hands raised, so if you'd like, you can close public comment at this time.
Yep, I will close public comment now and move to the consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar which night is the approval of minutes from the January 10th, 2021. Is that correct, Ms. Sandoire, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, or should that be 2022?
Um. See, let me double check the agenda.
The, uh, the attachment is actually from 2022, as you would expect.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like that that is a typo. I apologize.
Okay. So the approval of minutes for the January 10th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, does anyone have any objections or corrections? Commissioner Riggs.
Um, yes, I have at least a question and perhaps staff can help me. On page 10 of the report, after a lengthy discussion, there was a summary of the motion which hinged on landscaping, so the sixth paragraph, it begins Commissioner Riggs said he would clarify that the landscape plan be resubmitted to clarify the hedge was not based on trees. But then when you get to page 12, item 4B for project-specific condition, the addition of one or two trees is listed. But the clarification of the hedge not being based on trees at 36 inches is omitted is, I confess that after six weeks, I don't remember the exact conclusion of that very lengthy discussion, but it would appear that that the clarification regarding the hedge was, uh, was a consensus. So perhaps staff could clarify 4B whether 4B is meant to include that item.
See, I was, I was looking up, trying to find the correct page, so the first.
I referred to the sixth paragraph where I'm quoted on page 10 of the minutes. And then the project-specific conditions are listed on page 12. And that would be item 4B, of course.
Okay, so Commissioner Riggs, could you, we, I'm not sure what the, could you repeat the question, so? So the condition is to plant, includes the requirement to plant trees?
Yes, there were two items discussed on. One was planting of a couple of trees to intervene in the view space. And then as I directed you to page 10, paragraph 6, when I was prompted regarding the motion, I said, well, Commissioner Riggs said he would clarify that the landscape plan be resubmitted to just clarify that the hedge was not based on trees and that one or two trees in coordination with the planning division would be added. So we've accomplished half of that in 4B, but not all of that. If, if needed, also paragraph 7 indicates Mr. Hebert said it was acceptable and he was sure that he could find that solution.
Okay, I, I see what you're saying. I, um, I mean, we'll make sure that this condition is applied, so there's a separate hedge and then the two trees. I think, I think that was everyone's understanding.
A, a separate hedge, Ms. Sandoire was not the issue. The issue was whether the hedge was based on trees at 36 inches, which we came to agree, I believe, was not logical. You'll recall that they were proposing a 20-foot hedge and that was the basis for trees. And you clarified to them that a hedge was limited to seven feet. Then we had a discussion that trees were not the appropriate planting for a hedge that one used shrubs and so forth. Uh, it is in the minutes, but just to simplify, I wanted to direct you to that concluding paragraph again on page 10. If you look at the sixth paragraph, where the two items are delineated and spelled out for the sake of clarity. And I'll be happy to read it again to clarify the hedge was not based on trees.
Okay, I think. I thought that was clear in the condition.
That the hedge is not based on trees, perhaps it is. Did I miss, did I miss some wording? I have done that.
Well, because as you noted, we don't allow tree, anything that's a full grown tree wouldn't be allowed as a hedge because it would, I mean, it wouldn't be allowed as the density of a hedge, so. So maybe I can rephrase my question, is the concern that, that there won't be trees and a hedge or what?
You know, perhaps, I, I'm sorry, I didn't anticipate that this would be challenging, so perhaps we could take this offline if, if the chair agrees, we would defer the approval of this so that I could work with staff regarding paragraph 4B.
Yeah, that makes sense to me unless any other commissioner objects to continuing the approval of these minutes. I think that's the most expeditious way to deal with it, so let's do that.
I will so move to continue then.
Okay, um, we have a motion, we have a second. The second, Mr. Tate? No. All right, uh, I'll second it from the chair.
I think Commissioner Harris meant to second it.
Oh, okay, I didn't see them. Okay, um, well, since we've done a motion second, I guess I will take a voice, uh, roll call, Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
DeCarty.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Riggs.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, so we've approved a continuance of the approval of the minutes. Um, I'll move on to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. The first item under this section, item F1 is a use permit by Joe Velasco at 277 O'Connor Street. This is a request for a use permit to demolish existing one-story, single-family residence in the attached garage and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U, single-family urban residential zoning district. The proposal includes an attached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, which is a permitted use. Uh, we have a staff report on this, which is by Mr. Paz. Uh, Mr. Paz, do you have any additions or corrections, late arriving items for consideration on this staff report?
There was an item of correspondence that was forwarded to the commission earlier today. Other than that, staff has no updates to the staff report at this time. We're here to answer questions and the applicant is also here with a brief presentation when we come to that.
Do we have any clarifying questions for Mr. Paz from the commission? Not seeing any. Okay, I would like to move to the applicant's presentation. Who do we have for the applicant?
Hello. I'm Pearl Reniker, the project architect. I wanted to provide a brief introduction to the project and some of the thinking behind our design choices. At the start of the project in September, we did the neighborhood outreach. The owner walked around the street and rang people's doorbells and tried to speak with the nearby neighbors. And when he wasn't able to reach the homeowners, he left a copy of the plans in an introductory cover letter with contact information. Uh, we didn't hear back from any of the neighbors until today when we received the letter from the neighbor on the right side. Um, so the neighborhood is in transition architecturally, there's definitely a mix of older one-story homes and newer two-story homes in a variety of forms. There's also quite a mix of lot sizes and types in the block. Uh, the owner was interested in a more modern style of home and understanding that this new home was going to be larger than the home it was replacing, we tried to consider some ways to reduce that impact on the neighborhood. The modern flat roof design helps somewhat in keeping down the overall height and mass of the house. It's, uh, we're proposing this house at 24 feet high, where the maximum allowed is 28 feet. Um, we also kept the second floor relatively small and compact. Um, it's only about 30% of the overall floor area of the home. Uh, and also more of the length of the house, including the attached ADU is on the left side of the lot, which is adjacent to the long driveway of the flag lot home next door. Um, we also believe we chose a mix of exterior materials like this stucco, neutral stucco, brick and wood siding that's kind of neutral and compatible with the neighborhood. As for the rest, I think you've seen the plans and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Um, do we have any clarifying questions for the applicant before we go to public comment? Not seeing any. Um, so I would like to now open a public comment on this agenda item. Uh, Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised now?
Thank you Chair Doran. At this time, I do not see any hands raised, but as a reminder, members of the public can provide public comment by selecting the hand icon on their interface for Zoom and alternatively calling by phone, they can press star nine. Uh, we can wait a moment if you'd like. I still don't see any hands raised at this time.
Yeah, let's, uh, let's give them a few seconds here to get their hands raised. Still no, uh, hands raised from the public, Mr. Paz?
I see no hands raised at this time, so if you'd like, you're welcome to close public comment.
Yes, I will close public comment now, bring it back to the commission or further discussion and any questions. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in this application? No one, uh, no one's raising their hand on the commission. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I just want to recognize the long letter from the neighbor and would ask the applicant about one aspect of it, which was the proximity of, uh, you know, how did you consider two stories and the second floor looking, uh, their concern looking down into a, a single-story home nearby? I wonder if you could just address that, that concern. I recognize that it sounds like you just heard about this today.
Yeah, I mean, the owner did want a two-story home, um, which is permitted in the zone and is next to the one-story home. I mean, we comply with all the zoning setbacks, all the, you know, the daylight plane, all the distances from the property lines. I mean, the neighboring house is about nine feet from the property lines. There's about 14 feet separating the two. Um, all of the side windows are translucent privacy glass, so there's no opportunity to look down into the neighbor's yard. Um, I mean, I feel like we're, I, I do realize it's unfortunate. I mean, this is a larger two-story home, whereas the old store home that we're proposing to replace was one story and smaller. So, I mean, I guess there is some neighborhood impact, but I mean, I feel like, you know, it's going to be designed well. I really don't feel like it's actually in danger of collapsing on top of her house if there's an earthquake. I mean, it's going to be really well structurally engineered. So. I mean, I guess. Yeah, I guess, you know, she definitely commented that she felt the house was too large, but I guess there's, I'm not sure that we're going to necessarily be able to reach some sort of reasonable compromise or accommodation there.
I appreciate it. Thanks for, for your answer. That's very helpful.
Anyone else wish to present comments or questions? Would anyone care to make a motion on this application? Yes, I'll make a motion from the chair to approve the application. I will hold off on that and recognize Commissioner Riggs.
Oh, thank you. I, I was afraid that I was jumping in ahead ahead of commentary. And, um, I guess I really do, uh, have just a question of staff, which would be, uh, with obscure glass on the windows, does that, because it's named as part of the application, does that run with the use permit?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the commission? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion from the chair to approve the application as written. Do I have a second? Commissioner DeCarty was the first hand raised as a second. I'll call the roll, Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Tate. Commissioner Tate? You're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll vote in favor as well. Uh, the application is proved 7-0 as submitted. Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda involves a property 1125 San Mateo Drive, which is within 500 feet of my residence. So I'm gonna recuse myself from consideration of this application and ask Vice Chair DeCarty to chair this item.
Great, thank you Chair Doran. This is item F2, it's a use permit for 1125 San Mateo Drive. Request for a use permit to perform interior and exterior modifications to an existing non-conforming two-story, single-family residence in the RE residential estate zoning district. The value of the proposed work would exceed 50% of the replacement value of the existing non-conforming structure in a 12-month period and requires approval of a use permit by the planning commission. I believe, uh, Mr. Turner, I'm turning it to you.
Yes, thank you Vice Chair DeCarty. I just want to update the planning commission. We did receive one email um, after the publication of the staff report. Um, it was sent to the planning commission today um, and is also attached to the agenda. Generally, the, the email expresses concerns with, um, the conversion of the ADU. I just want to clarify that the ADU conversion is, is not within the scope of the use permit. It will be reviewed via ministerially, via building permit when the building permit application has been submitted. With that, I will take any questions.
Mr. Turner, any questions? Clarifying questions of staff? All right, seeing none, we'll turn to the applicant for your presentation and welcome.
Thank you. I'm Steve Borlick of Young and Borlick Architects and I am the architect and designer for Shirley and Mike Orsak at 1125 San Mateo Drive. Want to start by thanking all of you commissioners and staff and thank you to Chris Turner for uh, his time with us in getting this application together. It's, it's very much an application of technicalities, um, but to begin, and I just wanted to mention briefly my initial meetings with Shirley and Mike and recognizing that this is a 20 or 25-year-old home still within the useful life of the structure. Mike and Shirley have lived there for some time and did have some critiques about the livability. Uh, so most of our, most of our project has revolved around refinishing, interior remodeling, um, changing functional items, aesthetic items. They had some, they've had some problems with interior acoustics and, um, I think we're updating some of the ability to improve the livability of the rear of the house from a lifestyle, uh, lifestyle perspective that allows them really better access to their rear yard and takes advantage of some of the exterior space. Now, um, in case it wasn't noticed, one of the things I wanted to point to was the very narrow, the very narrow overage on the 50% cutoff for a two-story and we debated a smaller scale project which might have left a couple of the upstairs kids' bedrooms in this home untouched simply to come in at 49. something percent of valuation, but in the end, we want to be efficient. We want to recognize that now is the time to refinish and update the house and we found in our initial sort of, uh, discovery of this property that although it probably was just an oversight of the home's original construction, it is a little bit over floor area and it's a little bit over daylight planes. And it has a tiny little setback non-conformity. So, uh, so recognizing those, we, we did what we could with the floor area by taking advantage of an ADU conversion which allows for 800 square feet of floor area to be exempt if you're familiar with the changes in the state laws for ADUs and, um, you know, that, that was not something Mike and Shirley were immediately committed to, but in doing the ADU conversion and, and interestingly remodeling some attic spaces, we're able to get the floor area of this home now back under the FAL limits so that it does comply. Um, we, we are not changing the structure. We're not proposing to remove the daylight plain intrusions, but we are reducing the overall height of the house by reconfiguring the entry. So, uh, so the house, I believe if you look at the front elevation, that the perception is we've removed a large, grandiose, two-story luxury style entrance and brought it into a, uh, a nicer, more understated scale. This is a fairly eclectic street, eclectic neighborhood. There are modern homes and there are old traditional homes. This style is moving to a transitional direction. I think it probably began life as a ranch-inspired, traditional, but it also has some elements of arches and, and circles that, uh, that I don't think provide benefit to, to the presentation. So we've lowered the entry, uh, we've removed a fireplace that actually creates a setback encroaching. And, uh, um, you know, on the one hand, I think I could say that really this is exactly the same house as it started out. We're, we're not changing it at all, but as an architect, I want to tell you we've made vast improvements in the house and it's not, it's, it's nothing similar. Uh, so, so, um, in working with Chris, we, we discussed all of these technicalities and decided it was best to just go for the entire project and approach all of you through this conditional use process because I think that it's, uh, it's much too early in the life of this house to tear it down and rebuild it. And yet, uh, you know, it, it's, it's wasteful to chase little, you know, little tiny, I, I'm gonna say tiny non-conformities, recognizing they exist, they're there and, and I don't think that was the intention of the original build. If you've had a chance to look at the front elevations, uh, I hope you agree with us and I would love to answer any questions that any of you have. We're, uh, we're really quite proud of this project, so I, I hope it shows well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borlick. Uh, before we go to public comments, any clarifying questions for the applicant? Christian Riggs.
No, thank you. Um, just sort of an, uh, an item. Mr. Borlick, you mentioned that the fireplace created a non-conformity. Just to check with Mr. Turner, um, is a fireplace not exempt uh, from the setback requirements or is that under some other condition?
Um, so fireplaces are considered architectural features, um, so they are allowed to. so they are allowed to encroach into the side setback a certain amount. Since this setback is 10 feet or, since the required setback is 10 feet or greater, the fireplace would be allowed to encroach up to three feet into the side setback, so it's not actually a non-conformity.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm sure it's academic to the overall design, but which, I'll venture to say it's in good hands, so I'll leave it with that.
Any other clarifying questions before we move to the public comment? All right, seeing none, let's open public comment. Mr. Pruder.
Thank you, Vice Chair DeCarty. It's time members of the public are welcome to provide public comment by raising their hand with the hand icon or pressing star nine on their phone keypad. I do not see any comments, I should say, hands raised at this time, but we can wait a moment if you'd like before closing the public comment period.
Yes, let's do that.
Great.
All right, how is it looking now?
I still see no hands raised, so if you'd like, you're welcome to close public comment.
Let's go ahead and do that. Let's close public comment and bring it back to the virtual dais for questions or discussions among the planning commissioners. Commissioner Riggs.
Well, I'm just gonna make a wild guess that other commissioners are seeing this as a positive, not the negative, and certainly not a challenging project in any case. So, I will move to approve the project per the staff report, approve the use permit.
So, we have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Kennedy has seconded. Any discussion or comment before we move to a vote? All right, seeing none, we'll do a voice roll call, Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Commissioner Doran is recused, so I believe it passes 6 to 0 with the recusal. And thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Borlik.
Thank you all very much for your time. Thank you so much.
With that, I will close item F2, and I will hand the gavel back to Chair Doran.
Thank you, Vice Chair DeCarty. So, the next item on the agenda, F3, is a conditional development permit, major modification by Heather Skehan, Citizen M., 300 Constitution Drive. This is a request for review and approval of major modifications to an approved conditional development permit, CDP, for interior and exterior changes to the previously approved hotel building and changes to the landscaping and onsite circulation. No changes are proposed to the number of rooms, 240 rooms, the number of onsite parking spaces, 118 parking spaces, or the shared parking agreement between the hotel use and the other site occupant, Meta, formerly Facebook. Proposed modifications would continue to comply with the floor area ratio, building coverage, and maximum height limits of the previously approved CDP. In 2016, the city council certified an environmental impact report, EIR, as part of its approval of the Meta Campus Expansion Project, which included a potential 200-room hotel. Subsequent revisions to the Meta Campus were previously analyzed through the Facebook Campus Expansion Project, first to then the. In February 2020, the city council approved revisions to increase the number of hotel rooms to 240 rooms and approved a shared parking agreement, which was analyzed in a second addendum to the certified EIR. The currently proposed revisions have been reviewed against the analysis in the certified EIR and first and second addendums, and the proposed revisions would not result in new impacts or an increase in the severity of previously identified impacts. We have a staff report on this item by Mr. Paz. This item was continued from the meeting in February 14, 2022. Mr. Paz, do you have any additions or corrections to the staff report?
No updates to the staff report at this time. Staff from the planning division are available to answer questions, and we also have Ed Shafer with the City Attorney's Office to answer any secret questions that the planning commission may have.
Do we have any clarifying questions from the planning commission? Not seeing any. I would like to open it up to public comment now. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised for the public? Actually, I think I'm out of word. We should go.
I was just thinking, sorry.
Yeah, I think I'm trying to get out of word here. Such a rush to hear from the public. So, let's hear from the applicant first. Whoever wishes to speak in behalf of the applicant.
Awesome. Thank you so much. We've had no public comment. We want to hear public comment, right? Um, hi, I'm Heather Skin with Citizen M. Hotels. We're the developer for the hotel project on the edge of the Meta Campus. I'm getting better remembering the name. Thank you for reading out the description. We are really excited tonight to have our architect Brad Richards go through with you all the design development and refinement that we've done since we met with you all two years ago now for our CDP approval. So, it's about time we talked with you all anyway. There's a 60-page report in there, but I think Brad will do a brilliant job of summarizing it with a few really snappy images. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Heather. If I can get control of the presentation again, that'd be great. I can flip you guys through it. Thank you. Again, I'm Brad Richards. I'm a principal and architect at Baskerville. We've been working with Citizen M. on this for quite some time, and you guys have been working on it for quite some time as well. So, I will jump in to the main points here, if I can control the screen. So, this is the overhead aerial, and you can see the before and sort of the after of the design as developed. As Heather said, we've been refining the design along the way. The outdoor public amenity space remains still as the hub of the site. As you can see here, it's activated lively and engaging community space. The restaurant space also remains intact and will be at the heart of the development. And I lost control. Can you flip to the next one? Perfect. So, this is the main entrance. We have, in this area, condensed the program to work better underneath the footprint of the building and shifted the publicly accessible meeting space to take advantage of the connection to Chilco and Constitution over here at the intersection. If you can flip again, again, you have the before and after. You can see it creates a bright, engaging beacon that reflects the energy of the campus externally to the public for you as well. So, these basically highly activated business travelers, Meta employees, and the Bell Haven community will all be in the space. Next slide. This view, you can see the before and after. So, this is the view from Chilco. The local artwork and the signature red stair is still a showpiece in the Chilco frontage. On the artwork, we're still working through the public engagement process for the art selection and the signage, and that will be coordinated with the community director separately, but it will go through all the appropriate community outreach process and channels there. Again, the building's been condensed on the backside here to be more efficient, and then we've simplified and made it look more intuitive, the wayfinding to the primary entries. So, there's a direct pedestrian and bicycle access now to the sidewalk at Chilco that leads you up to the entrance on this side. Next slide, please. So, on this side as well, there's condensing of the footprint, including the consolidation. There were two loading docks before, one for the hotel, one for the restaurant. We condensed them into one zone to make it more efficient. And then here, you can see we've enhanced the restaurant entry experience to make it more prominent, visible from the parking lot along the Bayfront Expressway. So, we've really activated the full perimeter of the building all the way around this sort of front facade. And that's really the main points we wanted to get through. Happy to answer questions, comments.
Thank you. If we've got any clarifying questions from the commission, now's an appropriate time, otherwise we'll go to public comment. Mr. Riggs.
Thank you. And Mr. Richards, if I may ask, the penthouse screening has been removed, according to our report, and the before and after images, I wasn't actually able to compare very successfully. I may have been reading it backwards, but it looked like the screen was omitted on the before rendering. In either case, I'd just like to ask what materials, I'm sorry, in lieu of a penthouse, there will be screening. I'd like to ask what kind of materials will be used to screen the equipment? As you know, and architects know, but residents typically do not know rooftop equipment generally exceeds a one-story in height, so it's not a small item. And so, the materials, particularly given the view angles along Bayfront Expressway, are fairly important.
Sure. I think you can see, if I were to go back to the before and after, I think the conceptual running up front, as you know, it's sort of in the conceptual side, is still in that phase, and as it's developed, we've really tried to condense the mechanical units into a spine along the top. So, we've really pushed it back and kept it as linear as we could in the middle of the building so that the views from the various sites around the perimeter are limited as much as we can. So, the materials will be the same metal as the building beside, so it's a metal plating to match the same metal that's on the building beside.
That's terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I will like, we'll move to public comment now. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised now?
Thank you, Chair Doran. We do have one hand raised at this time. If you'd like, I could begin the public comment for this particular comment.
Please do.
All right, thank you. I have a person by the name of Julie Wong, who has her hand raised. Julie, I'm going to allow you to speak and be able to unmute your... Sorry, I'm just having a little trouble one moment. I apologize. But could the city of Menlo Park assist in unmuting, allowing Julie Wong to speak? I need just one moment. I have a bit of a technical issue at the moment. I'm sorry.
Okay. That's fine. Take care of it.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted at this time. Thank you for taking my comment. My question is, what kinds of mitigations have been considered, either in terms of design or materials, to minimize sound emanating from the building, either from mechanical systems or I'm more concerned about reflected sound? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that have their hands raised?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time, Chair Doran. We can wait another moment if you'd like.
Yeah, give it a little bit of time.
Sure thing.
No other hands raised?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time, so if you'd like, you're welcome to close public comment period. Thank you.
Yep, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the commission. I actually have a couple of questions. If we could get the slides back up. First question, on the facade, where the public open spaces, it's kind of an odd-shaped lot, so I guess it's the front facade. Yeah, that one. The front of the building, it looks like the open space is less open now. I'm just wondering if that's because of COVID. You've got some roof structures there and a pergola there, all of which looks very nice, but I'm just wondering if you could explain the motivation for the changes to that elevation? The reasoning behind the changes?
Are you referring to, I didn't follow what the area you were talking about. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's this side of the building. I think you had a previous slide that showed it better. It was like an aerial view. And it looks like a lot of the open space is kind of roofed over now, and I'm just wondering if that's due to COVID and people having to be outside more outside.
Can we back up a slide? Sorry, maybe we can look at the overhead one.
This is a great one. I think what's interesting about it is I know exactly what you're talking about. Good news is those are umbrellas, and that's something that's just, that's a new kind of element that we're trying to incorporate more into our hotels with significant open space. So, that's definitely something that's flexible. It looks like a lot of stuff that's in there, again, particularly in that aerial view, but for sure very movable and won't really enclose it. It's not really a permanent feature, which is, gives us the flexibility on the nice days to be able to move them out of the way.
Yeah, I actually, I think they're attractive. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Yeah, it looks like a lot of the space kind of roofed over, but those are basically tent roofs. I think it looks nice. I have no objection to it. I was just curious as to kind of the thought process behind it. On the other facade, the Chilco facade, you know, I guess I'm not as enamored of the changes. I think the previous elevation showed a lot of glass on the lower floor there, and now you've got what looks like, you know, kind of solid, flat, concrete block there. So, I'm wondering if you can tell us a little bit about the reasoning behind the changes on Chilco facade? Maybe we could get that slide back up? Another one after that that shows a kind of a ground level closer up. Yeah. So, previously, it looked like sort of a glass pavilion down there, and now it looks like a big block with relatively little glass that frankly seems less attractive to me. So, I'm just wondering if you can explain to us what the thought process was there?
Yeah, so there's a few things going here. One was just to condense the program underneath the bottom here, but also the way the stairs coming down here in terms of fire ratings and egress along this wall, and then the sheer on the building is also being held in this wall right here. So, there's a few things of the design developed, and we got through it that we needed to sort of incorporate into this wall. And you'll see on the other side, on each side, we try to keep it as open as possible, as much glazing as possible.
Yeah, so I'm not really thinking this with the stair wall is, but to the left of that, where you've got, you know, in the revised elevation, you've got this long, low, concrete structure with some windows in the lower right.
Understood.
And the smaller one, I mean, it's a little bit hard to see. And the smaller one, I mean, it's a little bit hard to see in this elevation, but it looks like there's a lot more glass in there.
So there was some program shifting around to make it, uh, a little more condensed on the backside here. So you are seeing, uh, some of the fitness center in the sound with the glazing, but the rest of this is a lot of the back of house, um, of, of the hotel, you know, so there's not a whole lot of it's trash rooms and mechanical rooms, electrical rooms, um, that are in that, in that piece. But we have condensed the footprint of that quite, quite considerably.
Okay, um, you know, it looks like about two-story structure. I mean, maybe not two-story relative to the hotel, but if you look at those windows, you know, that could be, if that's a normal plate height, it could be a two-story building. It's a pretty tall mass that, you know, uh, is, uh, it's just not very appealing to me.
With some of it is, is this way to hide the script, you know, to hide MEP systems that would be up here. Um, but I understand where you're coming from. It's just a lot more back house here than was before, because the program shifted uh, really to be underneath the foot from the building so we could condense the footprint.
I think what's interesting about that old rendering is, uh, it's kind of one of those tricky things about renderings. Often that one is consider some trees in that old rendering that are hiding the extent of the back of house. When you look at the old version of the plan, there's a pretty bulbous back of house that like, there was a big sweeping curve wall that was going to be, I think we've talked about it being stuck, although there were concerns from the commission about stucco that we had been taking into account. Um, so that thing was pretty massive and it effectively had the same corner as glass and activated. Uh, and then again, I think similar to the way a lot of buildings develop, the extent of mechanical space and parapet height and things start making the proportions not be nearly as nice as they can be during schematic design. Um, but I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to extend the height of those.
Okay, um, I'd like to see if, uh, other commissioners have further questions or comments. Mr. Riggs.
I would like to thank the chair for raising a couple of aesthetic issues. Um, I think given the location of this project, and, and of course, all the projects in, in this zone are large that, the, uh, finer points really will matter. And while on the one hand, I think if we had never seen an open first floor image, uh, on columns or, um, using, um, curtain wall for what has turned out to be backup house area. Uh, we might have felt that, um, well, gee, I guess that's how good the building is or isn't. We, we unfortunately now have a better image remaining in mind. And I did note in my review of the project that, um, the pedestrian scale seems to have lost its attractiveness in a couple of ways. Um, while I can appreciate moving the storefront out ahead of the columns, it does take away, um, shape, depth, scale, uh, when we do that. Um, and the, what I'll call the ends of the, um, double jointed form, particularly at the lower, whatever that is, 16 feet or so, have, have just become blank. Um, it also seems to call attention to the new surface treatment behind the stair where it had been, uh, sort of, uh, large-scale ru- uh, running bond. It's now a vertical stack block, um, which is just not as friendly. So, um, I, I have to agree, um, with, um, Mr. Doran, uh, regarding those three areas. And, and while it doesn't show in this rendering, the other end of the double jointed form, losing its stair, of course, loses all its drama. Um, so one can only express a wish that, uh, we had that texture that we had before. That actually, um, sums up what, um, what I had to say uh, in, in reviewing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Somehow my screen is lost. My screen seems to be frozen. I'm not sure if you can hear me now or not.
We can, Chair Doran.
Okay, um, I seem to have lost the visual on the other members of the commission, so I can't.
I think one of the things that would be a great, uh, discussion piece, and Brad, maybe you can, um, speak to how we had talked about this previously. I think there really is a great opportunity, Mr. Riggs, to respond to that idea of the pedestrian scale and texture, particularly on that back of house mass, particularly since we've got kind of, we've, we've got the opportunity to grow things along that or to play with texture. I think there's a great chance there to go back to some of those early ideas that we had. Um, it is on the north side, but I know that our landscape architect had some great suggestions for us several months ago, which is awesome. Um, in terms of on the, uh, uh, where we have, where we previously had the pilote sticking out, I think what's still relatively positive and, and I, I, and this is just from my experience walking around, um, these kinds of projects. We're really focused on maintaining transparency of that mass that's down there. So we've got a very, very transparent base. Because I think what's really cool about our hotels is really what happens inside them. They're very, very active. They're filled with art. There's lots of texture and lots of color and lots of different stuff inside. So I think in some ways, we're really looking to emphasize visibility through that. Frankly, it's how we get people into our space, um, is, is with the cool stuff inside. So we might be losing the pilote out front, um, being really literally out there, but definitely maintaining that transparency to come in. So hopefully that would make, if you were to be in a more, the, I think that that nighttime shot kind of starts hinting at it, because we've got some cool light fixtures going on, but definitely about seeing inside to get that sense of pedestrian scale.
Yeah, and I think, I think on the, on the, on the mass, you know, towards where the fitness centers too, there, there's some texture and scale, you know, we can, we can do to sort of break that up. I don't, I don't know that we can get quite to the same language. It was there before, but there may be some things we can do there to, to, to make it a little more pedestrian scale, uh, and friendly there and add some interest.
I think that'd be great. And then I think that, um, I would be interested. This is always one of those tricky things again with early renderings. Um, I think that those metal panels that are the, the kind of running bond that we're seeing on the upper portion, that's kind of what they're gonna, that's a more realistic scale for what they were gonna be. I think in many ways, it's a sharper um, grout line that we're seeing effectively in there, but that's also very manageable in terms of really trying to pull that back so that it's not as stark of a, of a kind of columns of the stacked metal panels. I think that's very manageable with the, the color of the backing.
Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, and thank you to the, uh, Republican team for bringing this forward. If I reflect back to when this originally came to the planning commission, some of the excitement for the design was, was very much a mid-century type feel to the project. And I think, unfortunately, some of that through these, through these changes is being lost along the way. And I think, you, it, the project has tremendous merits, you know, coming through its modular, um, construction method. And then it was very much a, you know, a Jetsons type or somewhere between, uh, mid-century and Jetsons and a, a very, you know, unique appeal to it. But I think when the podium base slightly goes away and you start to have, you know, we start to gravitate towards a, um, Crown Plaza at the airport in a way from uh, a mid-century look. And I don't, and I want to take into, I want to respect some of the load bearing cons, um, requirements that you have. And at the same time, you know, that, that back of the house, back of house building, in the same way that as you go up 101 and you look at Hotel Mia and you look at it from 101 and that's supposed to be the backside of the building and all you see is that, uh, back of house building from the 101 perspective, it is, you know, it's not dissimilar from this. Something's got to take the hit, but I think the change in that building and the change in the ground floor, um, has made a much more angular feel to the, to the building and it's gone, I think from, uh, there's been a deterioration, I think, in the innovative uniqueness of it to a more formulaic uniqueness. And I know that you've got a tough challenge to balance some programmatic needs and some structural needs. But I'm missing that in this design and it doesn't feel as innovative and certainly from a, you know, if I, if I take off my plan, my planning commission had is, there, one part of it is essentially, okay, great. One of the development standards is an accretive to the neighborhood, is it the right project for the area? Does it fit the laney's perspective? You know, that's the one half. The other half is, you know, in Menlo Park, our planning commission also has the, the ARB hat as well. And if I, just from a moment, you know, where that ARB hat, um, I, it's, it's, it's a loss. I, I think, um, aesthetically, the, the uniqueness of it in that mid-century slash George Jetson feel has gone away through some of the constraints that, um, through, through some of the, the changes and all. Oh, that is my input at this, at this point. Thank you.
Although I would love to quote you, Mr. Barnes, mid-century meets Jetsons would be amazing. And the art brief going for that big public art piece, I think that would be magnificent. Um, uh, very duly noted. I think that that's, um, that's something that we very much get a feel for when we're working and thinking about the inside a lot, for sure. We feel that like that innovativeness that, again, there's a lot of texture to our hotels. There's a lot of stuff that goes on inside and, and we picture our hotels in that way. So thank you for asking that question in terms of the look on the outside. I think there could be some great opportunities to emphasize some of those things that are the forms that I think you're responding to. And again, God, that'd be a great art brief, uh, mid-century meets Jetson. I'm, I'm really into this, guys.
Mr. Tate.
Um, good evening. I, um, I agree with the three commissioners that spoke before me. And, um, we did spend a lot of time, um, you know, discussing the art and, and that wall and just, and I think everyone really did like the design before and, um, and I'm missing it. Um, and, and this is like in my neighborhood, so I, I will be like moving around in that area. And, um, um, yeah, I, I definitely like the openness, uh, and, and the glass from before versus the rendering now. And I hope that there's some way that we can, uh, get some of that back. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. Uh, Chair, Vice Chair DeCarty.
Yeah, for Mr. Richards, I, I thank you. I appreciated the presentation, the update. Um, you mentioned this a little bit, if you have more detail about how you're seeking public input on the art. What are those steps? Who will you be talking to? Um, I, I appreciate the, um, the scan, the reference about the brief. What does that brief look like? If you could give some more detail on that and the timing as the project proceeds?
Absolutely. I'll be honest that we've only really just started getting into the art brief. Um, one of the first steps obviously is making sure we have a building to put, um, art on. So step one has very much been about getting approval from you all, from, uh, the rest of the city in terms of being able to build it. And then from there, uh, we do have some work that's going to be happening. Um, Flor, who's, uh, our heads up, kind of our art curation, she'll be working with the, I'm gonna get it wrong, the community director and, um, aligning on the, the kind of preferred method of outreach there. Uh, we want to make it, uh, we want to make it work for others, um, for, for the community there. Um, we've done it in other cities where we've put large pieces of public art like that. Um, it often becomes a very public kind of process in terms of us reaching out to local artists and saying, well, I mean, we do a lot of stuff, a lot of communicating on that stuff via Instagram. It's kind of our, it's kind of our primary means of communication in some ways. Um, but we are going to be developing that strategy with the community director. Um, and I think that, again, pending what happens with this conversation, that'll really drive what the timeline on that looks like.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, you know, for my, my comments, I would generally concur with the, with the four commissioners who preceded me about the, the direction the project is taken. I, I, I'll just, I'll say that. With the art, I would highly encourage you not to prejudice or, um, uh, warp that input. So if you use Instagram, you're going to hear from some folks. If you say it's a George Jetson meets mid-century modern, you're going to prejudice what you get out of this. This is a part of our community that is a deep, um, and longstanding part of a community long before Meta, um, came. Um, and um, as you said in the brief, this needs to serve everybody. It needs to serve Meta employees. It needs to serve people who are going to the hotel and it needs to serve the community. Um, and I think if there's a bias, the bias needs to be extensive outreach to the community element of this. This is going to be highly visible. It's what you'll be able to see when you come in. And if all it does is exude, um, a, a portion of that constituency, but doesn't meet, um, all of that mix, then I think that's a big miss. Uh, and so we just put a point on that.
Thank you. I think that that's what's really positive about your guys' process of having us work with the community director in that way, is it helps temper us and it helps pull us back from the way we'd normally go out um, in cities and it's, uh, it helps ground us in the community in that really nice way.
Mr. Kelly.
So I think, um, you know, thank you for the presentation. I thought it was very interesting, um, to add what the five commissioners before me said. You know, I think one of the pieces here is that what the iconography that is placed on the external, you know, on any part of that building really needs to, needs to pay homage to the community that it's in. There is, you know, i- if you just map, put massing blocks, so my office is over there and I will, I, I pass this, I will pass this every day and I pass this every day. You know, it's just one big block against another big block against another big block and some beautiful red stairs and something on one side is great. But, um, you know, at the end of the day, you know, as Commissioner DeCarty just said, this community's been there a lot longer than Meta. And anything else that will be there, um, you know, and sort of tying in, you know, maybe bringing in some of that connection to what will be the new, the rebuilt, uh, Neta Harris Community Center, right? It's not too far away. You could draw that in pretty simply with some, with something. You know, this is a real opportunity to, to, to create a palimpsest that means something to people into the future. And, um, something that, uh, really respects the history of that neighborhood, because when this goes up, that's, I think that's the last corner, right? Like that's, everything else is gone. So that's, I would just ask for that, uh, you know, that respect for the community and sort of thinking more long-term about, you know, sort of the history of that, of the history of that community.
And it was Neta Harris was the name of the community center? I just want to make sure I have my note right.
Oh, Neta Harris.
Oh, Neta. Thank you so much. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Do we have other commissioners who would like to speak at this time? I think that, uh, there's a consensus that, um, there's not a lot of enthusiasm for, uh, the architectural changes from the commission. I'm wondering, uh, we've got several findings we're being asked to make. Some of them relate to the environmental impact report and the lack of any impact of these changes on that, which I and the lack of any impact of these changes on that, which I would feel comfortable making. But also we're asked to make findings about the architectural changes, which I'm less enthused about. And I am considering asking the commission to split the approvals and ask the applicant to work on the architecture a little bit more before we approve the architectural changes. I see we've got a hand raised.
Yeah, this is Manhail, that's with Citizen Am. I just wonder, it definitely looks, we don't have, have the votes for tonight. If it makes sense to ask for a continuance to, to work with, with staff on incorporating what we heard from, from tonight and come back to you.
Yeah, I think if the applicant's willing to agreeable to a continuance, I think that's the best approach. So it looks like the applicant is in favor of continuance. We got Commissioner Barnes, would you like to speak to that?
Allow me to yield the Commissioner Riggs, because I think he was before me.
I don't think I have my hand up.
Oh, thank you then. Um, so, but what I would say, so if in fact we do go to a continuance, what I would like to hear on the next go around is, you know, our, in articulation of some of the trade-offs, which are motivating some of the changes to better understand. It's easy in a vacuum to, to be an art director. It's harder when that has to actually mix with form and function. So I think we, I think we for sure have some opinions on, on the externalization of the look. And then if you could also, at the same time, when you come back, educate us a little bit more on, on the why with what you come back with. And that'll help certainly from my perspective, understanding some of the decision-making, because again, in a vacuum, it becomes somewhat of an esoteric exercise. And I want to make sure it's also blended with some functionality and some, you know, some project needs as well. So that would be my request to, and I direct that not knowing where you're going in that direction. I'll just make that general comment.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to continue? Well, I'm going to make a motion from the chair to continue this application to a future date to be determined, I suppose. Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty, did you want to speak?
I just have a, it's a clarifying question before we vote for staff. I mean, essentially, if we were approving, we would be approving what's an attachment A. If I have that right. And so I guess I'm asking staff, what functionally are we expecting to change? By continuing, are we supposed to give guidance that something functionally should change in attachment A? Or is this not essentially related to attachment A?
Through the chair, if I may respond. So the, the plan set that's referenced in attachment A is what we, we've seen renderings that were excerpts from the plan set. And so if there were specific design considerations that the planning commission wished the applicant to implement into the design, I think it would be helpful to provide some specifics as to, or maybe not super specific, but some, some general things that they would, they would like seen so that those can be incorporated into a revised plan set. It's my understanding that the, the majority of the comments have been focused on the north elevation. So the view from Bayfront Expressway. Certainly if there, if there were other elements of the design that the planning commission wished to see differently, it, it would be helpful for staff and the applicant team to hear those enumerated.
Okay.
Just real quick, just on my question though. So essentially this is encompassed in A3B is where we are. Is that what you're saying? Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Sorry to, to Chair Dorn.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Commissioner DeCarty for the clarification. I, I think it is a good idea to give some guidance to the applicant and the staff. So I'll kick off and I think I'll just poll the commission because I think everyone has some opinions on this. From my perspective, the treatment of the Choco facade and, you know, the back of the house operations is probably my biggest concern. I just don't think there really is a back of the house here. This is kind of a high-profile side and every side is, is a front as far as I'm concerned. So I found that the back of the house operations to be just particularly unattractive personally. And would like to see something, it seemed to me that the previous version was more interesting. I would also, although I didn't raise it in my previous comments, I think that some of the other commissioners had a good point about losing the look of the, the building on the columns and just having kind of this straight curtain wall at the base loses some interest. And with that said, I think those are my biggest concerns. And, and I think I, I don't disagree with anything anyone else said, but I'll let them say it individually because I think they can say it best. And, and I would like to just poll the commission because I think everyone has an opinion here. So Commissioner Barnes, would you like to give some guidance?
Thank you. I have no, I have nothing additional to add to what you just said.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeCarty.
I know, I, I'm the same. I think you summarized that well, Chair Dorn.
Okay. Commissioner Harris, I don't think we have heard from you.
Yeah. I would, I would echo everything that I've heard. When you do come back, if you, I know, I realize that the building comes first and then you're going to work on the art. But to the extent that you can start thinking about that, and when you come back to us, provide us a little bit more grounding and, and overall thinking on that, I think that would also be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy.
I have said, I have said everything that I feel that I need to say.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, I suspect you can give some more detail to your opinions.
No, actually, I, I think I pretty much worked off of your good observations and, and just maybe put it slightly differently that the pedestrian scale or pedestrian experience, maybe I should say, needs a little more attention and the material and or patterns on the two end walls need to be more generous.
Thank you. Commissioner Tate, would you like to add anything?
Chair Dorn, I agree with you completely that this is a high-profile location and that there really is no back of house. And, and I also agree with Commissioner Harris regarding the art and having some more direction. Or, you know, your thoughts really about that developed a little further because we did spend a significant amount of time with that discussion the last time we saw you. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would ask Mr. Paz and also the applicant, if they feel like they had enough input. Mr. Paz, are you, are you clear?
Yes.
Would the applicant like to ask us any questions before he closes?
I think I, I may have one or two, but I think the comments about the aesthetics and the scale and pedestrian aspects in here are all, all, all understandable. I think is it fair to say programmatically? And sort of the massing that we've, we've got in, in this updated scheme is, is acceptable. And we're just working on the aesthetics around that at this point. I think that would help us to sort of pin that down and make sure we're, we're dealing with that correctly.
Yeah, I, I think from my perspective, the answer is yes. I mean, we are, we've considered the application before. And I think the massing is consistent with what we've seen before and what we've grew before. I think we really, really are talking about the architecture and the aesthetics. And if anyone disagrees, Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, the only thing I'd say on that is if in order to achieve what we're trying to achieve, you got to move the gym back to the second floor. I mean, I guess, I guess that's the only thing I'd say, like programmatically, sure. But if we're trying to also get to this aesthetic goal, I just, I think we might have to look at other things as well. Thank you.
Understood.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yeah, I will say that I don't think massing is something that we, I'm certainly not concerned with. We have been to the movie on this project. We, it is a well-designed project. What we, what we're, or up against are these changes at the end here, which aren't necessarily reflective of, of massing. You, the, the homework is to figure out how to move things around. But this is, this is a an allocation of space and a, an aesthetic issue. I don't think it's fair to go into a redesigned office.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate that there was an effort to move the active spaces down to the ground floor. And I, I think we'd be remiss not to appreciate that, that effort.
Thank you. And Mr. Hilbert.
Yes, I have one question. The art came up twice as, as something you would like to see more detail on. I wonder what that, whether that's process or the artwork itself, because in all honesty, we're months away from selecting an artwork. Typically, we spend a lot of time working with the city, trying to figure out what the best process is to together come up with a great artwork. Because if the ask is to come up with a proposal for art, that's going to be difficult in the short term. I want to manage expectations there.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Paz next. I know Vice Chair DeCarty, you had your hand up first, but like to give Mr. Paz a chance to respond to that.
Thank you, Chair Dorn. And just with respect to the timing around the artwork, the CDP did outline the timeline for the community outreach process. And so as, as Heather mentioned, there, there would be a community outreach that would be, a, a community outreach plan would be verified by the community development director. And the artwork would need to be finalized prior to occupancy of the hotel. So there, that would be at the later stages. Then, then this modification. And the, and the lighting and some of the elements of the, the art installation would be seen by the planning commission, but unless deemed necessary by the community development director, the commission would not have a final approval on the artwork itself.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty. Vice Chair DeCarty.
Okay. It feels like that, that we can still get somewhere in between here. It feels a little bit like you could at least share a little bit about what you're thinking about the brief and what the brief looks like. And it feels that you can share a little bit about how you would do that community engagement and that you would, you know, know the name of the Onetta Harris Center and those sorts of things. I think that would give at least me some more confidence. I, I don't think we should be in the art approval business at all in this mix. And I think that timing makes perfect sense. But I think there's still some way to come back and to have us have more confidence about those pieces.
Understood. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, I think we have a motion in a second.
I think Commissioner Tate has a hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tate.
And Vice Chair DeCarty said what I was going to say pretty much. I do think that, that there's something to, that you can bring back to us. Because we are very concerned about the community outreach. And, and yes, I do understand that there is someone at the city who has this position and will be guiding this process. But again, given the lengthy conversation that we had and knowing the name of the community center that's down the street and in, you know, and all these things are very important and the, the means for reaching out to the community, like was already stated. IG is not necessarily the way to reach community artists here in this community particularly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Tate, I wanted to say once again, for the record, that when you raise your hand, it blends into the curtain behind you. So I'm not trying to ignore you, but I have a hard time seeing it.
Okay, that's fine. I'll start waving my hand next time. Thank you.
Or just adjust the camera a little bit. So it's a blank wall behind it. Then the hand will show up really well against the wall of the curtain.
Okay. Cause see on my side, it's on the wall side, you know, from my view. Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that. Um, any other commissioners wishing to speak? Cool, you have a vote. Not seeing any. So I'm going to call the role on the, the motion is to continue the application to a date to be determined. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
DeCarty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. So the motion to continue passes seven zero. Thank you very much. So that closes the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. The next item on the agenda is under regular business. We have under G1, a housing element annual report, City of Menlo Park. Opportunity to consider and provide comments and or a recommendation to the city council on the 2021 annual report on the status and implementation of the city's current fifth cycle general plan, housing element, 2015, 2023. We have a staff report on this. I believe it's by Ms. additions or corrections to the report.
Good evening, Chair Dorn and Planning Commissioners. Actually have a brief presentation prepared for you this evening. So I can walk you through that. And Mike Noche, the acting housing manager, and I will walk you through this presentation. And then we can turn it back over to you.
Okay.
All right. Trying to get this into presenter mode here. Looks like I'm having a little bit of trouble with that, but I will start to walk you through it as, as it's loading here. So I'll give you a brief background and a summary of this year's housing production, or I should say the 2021 housing production. And then we'll walk you through some milestones that were achieved during 2021. So since 1969, California has required all local governments to adequately plan to meet the housing needs of everyone in the community. And each year we are required to produce an annual progress report, which we refer to as an APR. And that's due by April 1st each year, and it documents the housing production amounts and housing-related activities that the city undertook in the previous year. And so we are currently in the fifth cycle housing element. And that runs from 2015 through 2023. The housing element, I think I'm getting a little bit here, seeing slideshow. The housing element provides a blueprint for how the city is going to meet its housing needs. And the city is not in itself producing the housing, but we have to demonstrate that we've adequately zoned for appropriate housing in the community. And so during the fifth cycle, we had a regional housing needs allocation, which we call Rena for short. And that is handed down to us from the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state. They produce a number for each region in the state. And then our regional association of governments, A-BAG Association of Bay Area Governments, then divides up that regional allocation among the different jurisdictions in, in the then divides up that regional allocation among the different jurisdictions in the area. And so for Menlo Park, our fifth cycle regional housing needs allocation was 655 dwelling units. And so the APR that we transmit to the state every year tracks the life cycle of our housing applications that have come in. And just gonna speed up here. It looks like now. Hopefully you can see my screen here. So the APR tracks the life cycle of an application, and that is from entitlements to building permits to final occupancy. And it's really, the, the number that we track is based on the building permits that are issued for each year. And so for 2021, we had 96 net new dwelling units produced. And as I said, that's based on the building permits that were issued during the year, the calendar year. The, the most, the largest project during 2021 was the 1345 Willow Road Project from Mid Penn. And that produced 58 net new very low-income units. We also had a very notable year for production of accessory dwelling units. We had 36 in 2021. And because of our production over time, we're one of only 29 jurisdictions in the state of California that is not subject to SB 335, which is a streamlining act that can take projects that would typically go through Planning Commission or City Council approvals and makes them a ministerial approval by staff. So we've, we've done a good job of maintaining our RENA production throughout this housing cycle. As I mentioned, our ADU production has been increasing. In 2020, we had 13, and we've had a 177% increase from that, from 2020 to 2021, up to 36 ADUs. And that increase is likely due to continuing changes, interest that came after state laws went into effect in 2020 that streamlined ADU permitting relaxed some of the requirements and the process around ADUs. And I would note that the staff report, I believe, says that ADU production increased 44%, but it is 177%. So we'd make that correction. So this next slide, I'm hoping can get to load here. Shows our overall development progress from 2015 through 2023. And unfortunately, not able to get the slide to advance. But what I would say is that we are becoming pretty close to meeting our our totals for the RENA, for the RENA cycle, the fifth cycle. Our total remaining RENA in the very low-income category is 16 units. In the low-income category, it's 38 units remaining. Moderate-income category is 121 units remaining. And above moderate, we exceeded a few years back. So we're well over the required amount there. And so that leaves really great. So if we could advance to the next slide. I'm sorry, sorry, if we can go back one slide, actually, there we are. So this is the table that I was walking you through. You can see here, this is our, our RENA requirement on the far right side, or far left side in bold. On the right side, you can see in bold our remaining unit counts. And so this is broken down within the, the APR. But I would say it was a pretty notable year for very low-income unit production. We also had, even though it was a lower number, one of, actually the best year of the, the cycle so far for moderate-income unit production. And as I mentioned, we've, we've well exceeded our above-moderate counts here. So in total, we have, if you, if you combine the very low, low-income and moderate-income units remaining for the cycle, it's 175. If we can go to the next slide. So just to give you a little bit of a glimpse ahead, we went through the numbers that count towards this year's APR, but wanted to fill you in on potential future housing production. So in 2021, City Council and Planning Commission entitled 890 new units, which is a 3,600 increase, percent increase from 2020. And these units could count towards future APRs once the building permits are granted for those projects. And so just pulling the, the three, three of the largest projects that are over 100 dwelling units each and tallying up the, the BMR units that could be produced. Could end up with 14 very low-income units, 46 low-income units, 73 moderate-income units, and 748 above-moderate income units. Of course, there are other projects underway as well that, that could add to these totals. And there are currently over 2,300 units under review for potential entitlements as well, which could produce over 390 additional BMR units. So that is an idea of what, what could be ahead for future APRs. And now I will turn it over to Mike Noche, the Acting Housing Manager, to walk you through a few of the milestones from last year.
Thanks, Tom. And everyone can hear me okay? Great. And thank you for, for having us, Planning Commissioners. Good to see you all. Again, Mike Noche, Acting Housing Manager. Let me advance to the next slide here. We apologize for those technical difficulties we are experiencing, but it looks like we're good to go now. So this evening, just on the, these next two slides, I'm here to, to highlight some of the milestones over the 2021 calendar year, which you'll find in Table D of the, of the APR. So in, in late 2020, the city released a NOFA Notice of Funding Availability for $10 million. And that application period closed in January of 2021. And we received three proposals, all from BMR, or excuse me, from nonprofit housing organizations. The, the first proposal we received, we actually had to act on very quickly. And that proposal did not go to the Housing Commission because staff had to work with, very closely with Hip Housing to move quickly on the, the property that was for sale, which was 68 Coleman Place. City Council did approve that proposal in February of 2021 with the sale being completed in March, oh, excuse me, that is a typo, in March of 2021, excuse me. So that was a quick turnaround, and we'll make sure we get that updated. That being said, the, the units that were purchased by Hip Housing, those were 14 units. They were basically, most of them were, were naturally affordable for the most part. And those have been converted to all low-income units. So as the units turn over, new low-income BMR, low-income households from the city's interest list will be notified and, and have the opportunity to move in. And we've already seen, I want to say, half of the units have already turned over to low income. So that was a great preservation tool there for, for housing. The next proposal we received was a $1.2 million proposal, working with Habitat for Humanity Greater San Francisco for a homeownership preservation program, and that'll take place in the Bell Haven neighborhood. It is scheduled to begin in the near future, in the beginning of, of 2022, within the next few months or so. So staff is working closely right now with Habitat for Humanity to refine the, the scope of work, and we'll be moving forward on that shortly. But it was approved by City Council in May of 21. And then the, the last proposal we received, which did have a City Council Study Session back in November of, of 2021, was for the construct, is for the construction of 12 low-income ownership units. We don't see as many ownership units at the low category. We only have a few in the city's inventory of ownership units. So this is a, a great project. We're definitely happy to receive it. This came in from Mid Penn Housing. And that the City Council did approve or, or give us feedback on the use of funds being acceptable for potentially a creation of a, a community land trust, which would be associated with this project. And there's definitely more information. I believe it's the November 9th City Council Meeting, if anyone is interested in more info on that project. We are expecting to go back to City Council in spring of 2022. The last milestone I wanted to mention this evening is the Housing Assistance Program, which was previously the Rental Assistance Program. We've expanded the program to include mortgage assistance. It allows up to $5,000 per household in assistance related to COVID-19 pandemic or other emergency circumstances. And that's in partnership with Samaritan House, San Mateo. The recent boost of funding came from American Rescue Plan Funds, which did have to be approved by City Council. I apologize for not having the date on here for you, but the initial funding for that program, when it was the Rental Assistance Program, was $100,000. And the additional boost was $250,000. And we're expecting that to last for the, at least a couple more years before we would reevaluate. And that thus far, it's funded, the assistance for 32 households or 86 persons, which has created a great security for those, those folks who've been assisted by those funds. And to wrap up, I will hand it back over to Tom. Thank you. And I'll, and I'll be available and staying on the line for, for any questions after the presentation.
Thanks, Mike. So we just wanted to, although the focus of this evening is, is certainly on the, the 2021 production for the annual progress report, we wanted to give you a glimpse ahead. As, as you're aware, and as has been discussed at previous Planning Commission meetings, we are currently working on the sixth cycle Housing Element update, which will cover the planning period from 2023 to 2031. And the regional housing needs allocation, including a 30% buffer for that planning period, is 3,830 dwelling units. And of that, 1,490 units need to be within the affordable ranges. So as I mentioned, preparation of that housing element is underway. There's an EIR that's, that's currently being developed that will study up to 4,000 housing units in order to meet our RENA requirement. The draft Housing Element is set to be released in spring of 2022, and that will be submitted to the, the Department of Housing and Community Development and also Public Review Period. The draft EIR will be released during the summer of this year. And we also have safety and environmental justice elements that are currently underdeveloped alongside the housing element. So very important things to keep in mind as well. And the deadline for submittal of the sixth cycle Housing Element update to HCD is January 31st of 2023. So we're quite busy and working, working ahead on that. And there is more information about project timelines and additional information about the upcoming sixth cycle Housing Element update on the city's website at menlopark.org/housingelement. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Chair Dorn. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. I see your hand raised this time. I do want to open up for public comment, but if you have clarifying questions, now's appropriate time for that. I would like to save commentary from the commission until after we've had public comment.
I believe what I had is clarifying.
Okay.
Um, so first of all, it's good to see you, Mr. Noche. It's been a while since Plant, Housing Commission. Good to see you. And so one of my first questions is for the ADUs. It's a great number, you know, to kickstart the new guidelines by the state. But what I'd like to know is the districts that, that these ADU, the applications went in and were approved. Do you have a breakdown via district? Either Mr. Smith or Noche? And my other question is the Mortgage Assistance Program. How did the word get out in the community? Did community members have to go knocking on Samaritan House's door? Or was there mailings? Or, or how did you reach out to the community? Because I, I personally don't believe that I saw anything in my mailbox about that. So just wanted to know what the outreach was for that. Or again, did homeowners have to go and, and seek this by going to Samaritan House?
So I'll, I'll take the first question. For ADU production, I think it's a great question. We do not, I, we do not have a breakdown offhand by district of the AD, of the ADUs, of the 36 that were produced. But we can certainly put that together, that information together and provide it. And we will be going to the Housing Commission this Wednesday. And so definitely before then, we can put that together and, and send it along to, to the commissioners.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And, and great to see you, Commissioner Tate, as well. And, and thank you for the question. It's definitely a great question. So, you know, in our partnership with Samaritan House, they've, they've taken the lead on a lot of the outreach. But I will say, I think more can definitely be done with regards to that outreach. I'll, I'll also mention, and as, as you see that I'm in the, in the acting role, currently, we've had some staff transitions within the Housing Division. So some of our, our time has been where we would have normally assisted a lot more with much more robust outreach on the, the staff side of things. We've, we've been having to juggle priorities. So I, you know, I would like to say that we've been as supportive as possible, but there's definitely room for improvement on the staff side. And I'll, I'll definitely continue to follow up with Samaritan House. We are basically just getting started on that kind of phase two of that additional funding. So there's definitely plenty of funding available and plenty of additional outreach that can happen, for sure. So I appreciate you highlighting that.
Yes, because I, I definitely think that it's important to reach out to all of the community instead of people that are able to take advantage of the program know where to go to get, get this. And, and, and other folks don't know or are struggling, but they have no idea really. So I, I'm, I'm excited that you are going to try, try to rope that in a little bit and make sure that the community at large knows that those funds are available. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Commissioner Tate. And I, and I also just wanted to mention, we, we definitely, I feel probably you know, four or five emails or, or phone calls a week with folks who are just looking for housing resources. And I, and I do direct folks quite often to Samaritan House as well. So we definitely are referring folks that contact the city. But again, we'll definitely look to increase the outreach.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes.
So Commissioner Dorn, I'll look to your guidance on this. I do have clarifying questions. But if, I'm happy to have you go to public comment first, then come back to it. W, W your preference on that?
Uh, yeah, I think I would like to open it up to public comments, and then the commission will have a chance for whatever questions or comments they have. So Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised on the public?
Well, Chair Dorn, thank you. We do have one hand raised at this time. I'm happy to introduce him and allow him to speak for three minutes at this time.
Please do.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. As you see, we have the timer up. The first person, I see one commenter with their hand raised at the moment. The person's name, I apologize for pronunciation, is Annie Hengehold or Henjhold. I'm going to unmute you now. You'll have three minutes to speak. And if you could please clearly state your name and your jurisdiction. We'll start the clock when you begin speaking, which begins now.
Hi, um, my name is Annie Hengehold, and I apologize about the jurisdiction question. I live in Menlo Park in District 2. So just logging on to get some general info, and I wanted to circle back to a question that came up when I was looking at one of those slides that was just presented. There was something mentioned about how SB 35 streamline exemption, we have an exemption. We're one of the only cities that has an exemption. And I wanted to clarify, because I understand that if those projects get streamlined, that there's no sequel review, community input is much, much less, if even involved at all. A lot of these developers can Community input is much, much less, if even involved at all. A lot of these developers can kind of go straight through with their projects if it's allowed to be streamlined. So I wanted to clarify. Because Menlo Park is a city that is exempt, does that mean that they can say yes to a project, but no to the streamlining exemption? So then some of that other stuff, you know, it, you know, potentially slows it down a little, because some of those other things get triggered, such as the Sequo review or community input.
Thank you, Ms. Hengehold. I will ask the seat to respond to that, but I would like to finish public comment first. If we have any other hands raised, I'd like to give other people a chance to talk.
Thank you, Chair Doran. At this time, I don't see any other hands raised. But as a reminder, if anyone would like to speak, welcome to press the hand icon, which is on your interface on Zoom or press star nine on your phone if you're calling by phone. And we can wait another moment if you'd like to ensure that all comments have been.
Yeah, let's give them a little time.
I do see another hand raised. If I may, I can introduce him.
Yes.
All right, we have someone by the name of Rini Sen Gupta, and I can let you speak at this time. If you could please provide your name and your jurisdiction at the beginning of your comment period. You'll have three minutes to speak, and I'm going to let you speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Rini Sen Gupta, and I'm from District Two also. So my question is, somewhere in this presentation, I understood that your role is to change the zoning. And what is it, what's the timeline to kind of go through that? And what should we be aware of when we are hearing of zoning changes in our neighborhood?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruder, do we have other members of the public that hand raised?
We do have an additional hand raised at this time. We have a person by the name of Steve. I can introduce them at this time if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay, this commenter named Steve, you may speak at this time. Again, please provide your name and your jurisdiction at the start of your comment. You'll have three minutes to speak. And I'm going to let you be able to unmute yourself at this time. And here we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is actually a follow-up question to the first question. I'd like to make sure that I'm hearing about the streamlining, that the streamlining is at, streamlining to design comments or safety comments, or both or either. I'm curious about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, can we get your last name or the transcript, please? I guess not.
Steve is still unmuted, I believe, but.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, if you could provide your full name, please, first and last.
Oh, Steve Wong from District Two, sorry.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised, Mr. Pruder?
We do not at this time. So having waited for this time, we could potentially close public comment if you'd like.
Yeah, I think I will. And before I go to the other commissioners, I would like to try to call the city to answer a couple of these questions from the public. Maybe, Mr. Smith, you could explain, we had two questions about the meaning of streamlining and Menlo Park being an exempt city. Could you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. So SB three thirty-five, SB thirty-five is a state law that if a city is not meeting its prorated share of Reno, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, for any given year, then that city is subject to streamlining. And basically, what that means is if you have a multifamily development and you're offering a certain percentage of low-income units as part of that development. And then there's a few other, it can't be on an ecologically sensitive site. You know, there's some certain stipulations around it, but if you meet those requirements, then essentially you don't need to go through. You don't need to go through a design review type process. You're essentially going through, and if you meet objective standards such as the allowed density, the allowed height, anything that's kind of very black and white in the code. If you meet those requirements, then the project is essentially approved. We are not subject to that because we are meeting our prorated Reno share, and we have been over the past throughout this entire housing cycle. And so streamlining is not in effect in Menlo Park, and projects do go through reviews Sequo, or if it needs a planning commission review or a city council hearing. All projects that require those are subject to them in Menlo Park.
Thank you. And then the other question was about the timing of zoning revisions. Could you just talk about that for a minute?
Right. I think that question is getting to the sixth cycle housing element. And I want to be clear that what we are discussing this evening is the fifth cycle housing element that we are currently in. The city is contemplating zoning changes as part of the upcoming sixth cycle housing element update. We are continuing to do public outreach, have been public meetings, engaging with stakeholders. That process will continue through the end of this year. And so I mentioned in the presentation that the city's website, menlopark.org backslash housing element, we will be posting all of our upcoming events. There's a lot of resources out there about work that we've done so far. And I would continue to look there if you're interested for upcoming community meetings and events to be kept up to date about those potential zoning changes that would happen as part of the sixth cycle.
Thank you. Now, I think Commissioner Barnes, you've been very patient, so I'd like to connect to you.
Thank you for that. So first, allow me to thank the staff for, A, giving us a presentation, and B, you know, all the staff and you being a proxy for the staff for all the hard work they put into working on housing our city. So I want to thank you for that. Question, a couple of questions, and one of them has to do with the production up to now. And how many of these projects have been a hundred percent affordable? And what are the barriers that you would say exist in Menlo Park for getting a hundred percent affordable projects? And by that, projects which would see tax credit financing and have some of the deeper affordability levels. What's, did we see any? And if not, why?
So I think one of the main projects, and Mike, I may ask you to help me out with this one, but I think the largest project that was on this year's list for two thousand and twenty-one was the thirteen forty-five Willow Road project. And I believe that was, are all of those units affordable, Mike?
Sorry, was that the thirteen hundred Willow Road?
Yes.
What you just mentioned, yes, the mid pen hundred percent affordable. And that's fifty-eight net new.
Yeah.
For a total of one forty.
Yeah, so there are examples such as that project. I'm trying to think of in previous years, I do believe quite a few of the projects that we have are sort of a mix of income levels. But, Mike, are you aware of any other one hundred percent affordable?
Yes, I believe during this cycle, I believe during the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen cycle, don't recall offhand, which is which, I'd have to look back. It might be the eighty-five units that was part of the Sequoia Bell Haven Development, I want to say, came online. It was permitted around that time, and that's a twelve twenty-one Willow Road. And then I believe the veteran site, six oh five Willow, that may have also come online around that time, about fifteen sixteen is when it may have been permitted and listed here. So I believe those would be, and typically, the hundred percent affordable is where the city is seeing the very low category units come through.
Thanks, Mike. And to answer the second part of that question, Commissioner Barnes, we've reached out to affordable housing developers, had discussions with them, and talked with other stakeholders. And I think obviously the high cost of land in the area makes it very difficult. We've also heard that the more density that we can offer, the more units that can be provided on a site, the more economical it makes it for one hundred percent affordable developments up to about two hundred acres or two hundred, sorry, up to two hundred units on a site. And other items that we've heard are about parking, reductions of parking contribute, and any other sort of financial incentives that the city can provide to help make those projects whole.
Thank you. That's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other commissioners that would like to speak? I'm sure Vice Chair DeCarty.
Yeah, I want to echo Commissioner Barnes, just to thank you both for the presentation. Thank you for the excellent staff report. And thank you to the staff for all the work you do on this. Really, really appreciate it. Just have a couple of random questions. So really encouraging to get the update on the ten million dollars from the BMR Housing Fund and those three projects. Do you know how, how long did the money, that ten million dollars, how long was it in the BMR fund? From when it came in to when it got utilized on these projects?
Sure. So I believe that's a great question, Commissioner DeCarty. So the statute for that, I believe it's a state law, so the city's required to use the funds within five years. And that is something we track internally as well to make sure we're not you know, in violation of those terms. So that's primarily why you'll see different amounts released for the NOFOs depending on funds available and how much the city you know, seeking to release at a given time. And it's typically released on a two-year cycle.
That's helpful. Thank you. And how much is in the BMR Housing Fund right now?
Great, great question as well. So roughly a little over two million is non-earmarked funds at the moment.
And can you explain the difference between earmarked and non-earmarked funds?
Sure, absolutely. So the earmarked funds are, so within the earmarked funds, we, even though it's not approved by city council, we would include like the, excuse me, the three point six million for the mid pen, twelve ownership units on Pierce Road as a potential, being we received a, you know, in staff's mind, a feasible, potentially feasible project that we're looking into, we're essentially earmarking those funds, so we could have an idea of what's left if that were to be approved. So and without it approved, we'd be looking at about five million in funds that haven't been. And that's when you're looking at the full report, which is typically part of the AB sixteen hundred report that goes to city council annually. You'll also see funding figures for items such as loans that have been issued. And those are listed as essentially receivables on our accounts. But anyhow, I won't go too much more into that detail. Finances are the experts on that. Then I'll leave it, leave it at that, but happy to answer more questions.
Would there be anything that would preclude the city council from determining that they could use in-lu funds for community amenities to feed into the BMR Housing Fund if they wanted to?
Yeah, you know, I don't have a great answer to that. I could definitely look into that, and we could follow up with the Planning Commission on that. I'm not quite sure offhand.
Awesome. Thank you. And then I just had two other quick questions. I really appreciated the chart in attachment A. And in A ten, there's an item H two C, which is essentially looking into an ordinance to protect existing housing. And it was actually really great to read through so many of those items and to see that they've been accomplished or that there was in process. But this one kind of stood out, that it looked like it wasn't being pursued at all. And I wondered if you could clarify why not?
And which item was that specifically?
So it's in attachment A, so I think A ten, or it's on page ten of the attachment, and it's item H two C. So that's in the spreadsheet essentially, and it's, it's the it appears that it's for staff to work with council on developing an ordinance to protect existing housing. And I wondered if that had been superseded by something else. Or just to clarify where that was. It's okay, this isn't a pop quiz, so if you just want to get back at some point, that would be fine, too.
No, I will say, so typically, what we've seen in the past is that any type of tenant protections, you know, if there's an appetite from council or if a commission is seeking staff to look into a certain tenant protection, then that is something we would, we would follow up on essentially, or potentially move forward.
At their direction.
So, yeah, it depends on direction at that time.
All right. And then my last one, and I appreciate this. Again, in the attachment A, this is on twelve, it's item H four B. It's essentially just a process for changes in the BMR guidelines. How are changes in the BMR guidelines related to the housing element? If at all, and what's the next steps or the sequence on that, just a little bit more detail?
Sure. It's a great timing, well-timed question. So tomorrow at the city council meeting on the consent calendar, we actually have so staff has been working with an ad hoc, BMR ad hoc subcommittee for the guidelines, which is made up of members of the Housing Commission, and that has kind of gone through most of the calendar year in two thousand and twenty-one and might be reflected somewhere in that table D. But that being said, we do have an item, which is basically for stage one of some changes to the BMR guidelines. And those will basically incorporate the preferences for the most part, so preferences and programming, general programming updates that are taking place within the guidelines. As far as staff looking at some of the commercial in Lufy's or residential inclusionary standards, that is what we're basically defining as stage two and something we're working with our team. So M group and planning staff as well with regards to how that process parallels with the housing element update. So that's something we're currently evaluating. We're getting some initial numbers, because an additional study would be needed in order to move that forward. And there are some HCD requirements as well.
Terrific. Thanks for the update on that. This is, I think, to Chair Doran. It would be great, I think, for us, once BMR guidelines are changed, to actually get a session on the BMR guidelines before we see them as part of a project that comes before us. So I guess that's just a request through the chair at some point. Thank you for the time, and again, thanks for all your work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you, and I promised to endeavor to keep my comments related to this report in past progress and the, you know, future housing element work. So from a practical question through the chair to staff, from a practical perspective, I mean, folks are, folks talk about Reno number and allocation from A bag down to Menlo Park. From a practical perspective, what happens if we don't, what happens if Menlo Park doesn't meet its Reno number? Is, what are those implications as you see them for meeting or not meeting?
Right. I think the main implication is that if we do not meet our above moderate income production income production and our low and very low income production, then we are subject to the SB thirty five streamlining that was discussed earlier. Other than that, there's not in particular, as long as we have a housing element that is in compliance, that has zoned appropriately for the number of of housing units that we need. It's really up to the the development community, private market to produce those units. And so aside from the the SB thirty five streamlining, there's not per se, a penalty or or any sort of legal issue that the city gets itself into as long as it has a housing element that's in compliance, that's zoned for enough units to be constructed theoretically.
And to be terribly clear, there's no financial penalty. There's no.
Right.
Okay. So there's a lot of there's a lot of folks you talked about, you got to meet your Rena number. But if you don't, okay, it's a fairly narrow consequence. So going back to the housing element and the housing that's getting getting built and housing that's coming online. Is there any coordination between the housing that's coming online and the school districts in the burden on the school district as it relates to? You know, the burdens associated with increasing student count? Is that this department? Is that another department? And you know of any communication related to, you know, the numbers of housing that get added to?
So that is for these larger projects that I mentioned, the projects that are, you know, over a hundred dwelling units. Those go through an EIR process, and we also do a fiscal impact analysis as part of that and look into some of that information. But I think we've had the discussion here before about how SEQUA is not necessarily looking at it's looking at physical impacts, impacts on the physical environment. And so some of that is not quite ideally captured, but we we do outreach to the school districts as part of we have had dialogue with the school district as part of these individual projects. And we do perform the the fiscal impact analysis and explore it as required under under SEQUA through those channels.
And that's the housing department of the city, correct? That you that your group.
The community development department.
Okay, so the question about financing and the capital stacking, getting housing built. Do you notice in these projects or in the in projects that came through? For instance, you've made Penn and some of their hundred percent affordable, whether the county of San Mateo was playing an important role in some of the financing, for instance, some of the gap financing. You know, by way of example, you've got Santa Clara County, their general obligation bond, measure A for for affordable housing, and they're very active in working with municipalities to get more housing delivered. So much of of the projects gap financing comes from the from the county of Santa Clara. Do you see any of that in San Mateo? Have you seen any of that in San Mateo County? And would it have been important in some of the work that has gone on over the last couple of years?
Tom, I can jump in on that. So so typically, on most of the the mid pen projects, we do see that gap funding from from the county being included. And typically, we get, you know, we're privy to that because we're the city is typically subordinate to most of those basically funding agreements that that come through other sources, whether it be the state or county. So we do see those.
You do? Do you? Do you see enough? This is asking for an opinion on the historical development. But do you see an opportunity for a greater role of San Mateo County? And you see, if you had a magic wand that could have been waved, would you have liked to have seen a more active county role somewhat similar, for instance, to what goes on in Santa Clara County? Would that have been helpful?
I I think that's a great question. I don't. I don't want to speak for the county by any means. You know, I I think in general, if we were looking at making projects more feasible, of course, we would definitely want to see additional funds coming through to projects. I think I think part of that and what will be identified in the housing element update is where those sites might be for a hundred percent affordable moving forward. And I think that's an important component to where the city wants to see that housing built. And I think that's mainly, you know, a strong aspect of the housing element update. So that's typically what staff will be looking forward to.
Question. Thank you. Question about the ADUs. In my anecdotal experience, I know of no one who's building an ADU and renting it. Everyone that I know that's that does an ADU, at least in in my universe, builds the ADU and uses it as a home office. Is there any information as it relates to ADUs that could permit it and build in? Whether it gets rented or that actually gets used as a as a home office in someone's backyard to do something else with it. Is there any delineation of that? Is anyone tracking that? Do you have any data on that?
So we do not have tracking on that at the city. But we do use the the Association of Bay Area Governments, A Bag. Their their housing technical assistance team has performed surveys and looked at different information that's been collected on ADU production in the area. And I think there's studies out of UC Berkeley and A Bag and and other organizations. And so generally, they have recommended that there's a certain sort of split based on this data that they've collected. And so that's what the city has been using. It's it's about thirty percent very low income, thirty percent low income, thirty percent moderate income and ten percent above moderate income. And the survey does find, you know, some of these are being used. They're not being used for, say, renting them out to individuals, but it may be to have a family member live with you rent free, which is a very significant, you know, obviously, a huge discount on their cost of living. So there are cases where that happens. There are people certainly who are renting them out, but there may be others who are not. That thirty 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 ten breakdown is actually conservatively weighted more towards above moderate and moderate income than what was found in the surveys that were that were performed. So we've actually overweighted the above moderate and moderate compared to the information that was gathered through through A Bag and other organizations.
Okay, so from a perspective of what's actually contributing to housing stock versus what is, you know, someone's home office, we don't, we don't really have a sense of that.
Right. I we don't have an address by address breakdown of of who's done what with their their ADU in Menlo Park.
Great. And then on the Coleman acquisition, I think I have that right, that fourteen unit apartment building. I'm sorry, I couldn't see in the, if I have that right, I couldn't see in the charts. What was the price per unit of the acquisition on that? Are you able to? What per door did it come down to? Out of curiosity.
Sure. Great question. Let me just do a quick math. And I don't know that I have the the exact sales price. I believe it was somewhere ballpark around seven million. It was fourteen units, roughly five hundred thousand per unit.
Yeah, that's a nice number if you don't have to build it. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the commission? Like to speak? Mr. Harris.
Yeah, hi. Thanks. Thank you again for putting together this presentation. Super helpful as well as the packet. My question is, is there, do we do a retrospective on the sites that were listed in Rena five or in previous arenas? As to which types of, which which types of land or which types of properties resulted in development of housing versus where they were not successful? Do we have any way to look back and see what, you know, what where we were successful, where we weren't successful? And does that drive what types of sites are on the the next Rena? Sites, site list. Thank you.
So thank you for that question. I don't believe that. So we we are in the process of planning for the sixth cycle. We are doing that review back. I don't think I have. I don't have any data that I could share with you offhand, but that is one of the considerations that that's looked at in planning ahead. More certainly, right, right in the middle of gathering all the information that we need to present to to HCD and put together for the sixth cycle. But I think it is, it is worthwhile for us to look back. It's not part of the APR per se to look back at specific sites that were identified in the the fifth cycle housing element. But that is information that we can, we can work on and certainly provide when we have more.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So there is a hope that we will have a resolution on the report to give to the city council. Mr. Barnes.
I'm saying you're looking for a if you're looking for a motion, the I'm looking at the staff reports. It says staff recommends that the planning commission review and recommend that the city council accept the twenty twenty one housing element annual progress report and attachment A. I will make a motion that we believe in that we've completed our review. I make a motion to recommend that the city council accept the progress report as represented in attachment A.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs.
I'd like to second the motion. And I just want to note that I too have an interest in making comments on housing policy. For example, I think that we should be building ownership housing, not apartments as much as we can. That is not impossible. That's not possible to the greater degree, but I would just like to reflect that what we are asked to do tonight is to make a recommendation on this report. And I certainly think we can do that without extensive debate. I would like to second the motion.
Thank you. So I'm going to call the roll on that motion, Commissioner Barnes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I want to add something there. Do we think it would be valuable for, the report is great, but also include in the report going to council the districts of the ADUs? Because I think that they would find that information valuable also.
Okay. Just will ask Commissioner Barnes if he would care to amend the resolution to request the staff to do that.
It seems reasonable. Let me ask staff before I ask them to do that. Would that, is that a sounds like a fairly straightforward data pool can through the chair, can staff do that?
Yes, we. So we published the Housing Commission staff report for Wednesday already, but the city council meeting will be in March and we can integrate that into the staff report for Housing Commission. We can give them an update through the presentation for those numbers. That wouldn't be an issue at all.
So absolutely, I'm happy to add as a condition to my motion that staff be asked to add the ADU by district. As part of their report out this to council.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Riggs. Oh, he's back. Mr. Riggs, you seconded the motion. Do you object to that amendment to the motion?
I do not.
Okay, we'll resume the vote. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Parting.
So can I just clarify this? Commissioner Barnes was amenable to that and Commissioner Riggs was not?
No, he is amenable.
I'm sorry. Not not amenable. Sorry, I apologize. So then then yes.
Okay, that's a yes vote for Commissioner Decarty, Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
Although yes as well. So the report is approved and recommended for approval to the city council with that request for additional information. So I believe that concludes the regular business portion of tonight's meeting. Next item is informational items. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have anything to add to the informational items?
I guess so. The next meeting will be March fourteenth, and it looks like we'll just have one single family item on that agenda and then for three twenty eight, which will be the following meeting, it looks like we'll have likely more items. And that concludes my updates. But yeah, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Sandmeyer, Commissioner Decarty?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on a request at our last meeting that we would step back and look at the connectivity between all of the projects that were at essentially the intersection of Willow and O'Brien and Life Sciences and the Facebook Village with that with the Willow Village Project and just wanted any update on how that was moving or when when that might be able to happen.
Yeah, I mean, it's something certainly we're looking into. I think with some staffing shortages, it's not always easy to add something like that. But you know, I've discussed it with the planning management and we definitely want to do a study session or at least an informational item. I'm not sure yet exactly when it would go to the commission, but it's something we're looking at.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Mr. Riggs.
I guess in the spirit of following up, maybe three, four sessions back, a couple of us also asked if there weren't, if we couldn't get some feedback from planners at the at the desk. If there were other ordinances that frequently required being bumped to a use permit that could have been clarified. I know that lots on cul-de-sacs, for example, often come. But I think we were hoping that staff might be able to give us an idea what items could be proposed for a relatively simple update of the zoning code. So just wanted to tickle a reminder on that.
Yeah, through the chair, if I can comment on that, I think that came up related to the requiring fences for certain or require use permits for fences over seven feet within the front setback and and so forth. I think that's I mean, we could do an informational item. I think it's a much larger kind of project to update the zoning ordinance. It's something that would have to be initiated by the city council and there's a lot of outreach and steps that to go through for something like that. Is Is that something the commission is interested in? Some kind of informational item on that or is that? I wasn't clear on that.
Mr. Riggs.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's, it's easy to make a much bigger project out of this than is the origin of this request. I have to say that probably a meeting of the, say, six most active planners. With perhaps a designee of this commission. Might simply sit at a table for fifteen minutes or less. And talk about what items come up besides fences. Fences may be the only one or there may be three or four others. That could be part of a very simple and brief zoning ordinance update. That could probably be written in two hours and slipped into an agenda with a recommendation. After going to the planning commission and, and, and getting a recommendation to council. So I think I'd like to keep this concept small and viable. Nimble and not try to make a. Citywide effort out of it. Does that, does that help? Define a limitation to the concept at all?
Yeah, I certainly appreciate the feedback. As far as, you know, discussions I've had with planning management staff is that it is. It does become more involved and it's something that needs to be directed by city council generally. With the staff time that is involved. But certainly we can. Look into that more and, you know, I understand the, the interest.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Sandmeyer, Commissioner Harris? You're on mute.
This is just a quick comment. I hope this is okay to do. I just, I wanted to let you all know that I went to the, both the open house and then the opening night of Robert Glasperth Guild on. Last week and I just wanted to really thank my fellow planning commissioners who have been here before I was, as well as the staff. I'm sure that was a lot of work and I just wanted to let you know that it was an exciting opening. It's really going to pay benefits to Menlo Park and then the, this, the opening night was a wonderfully diverse, happy, joyous audience. So I just wanted to just make a quick note of that and thank everyone. That worked on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, no further business to come before the commission. I am going to adjourn tonight's meeting at nine thirty three PM. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chair Doran. Be well, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.